I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which its hands, our nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Once you know it, it sounds just like grade school. You guys did a good job.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, the minutes from the November 19th, 2024 meeting, the accounts payable, and do we have a liquor license or pre-doing? I make that motion.
I will second that motion.
A motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented, minutes as written, accounts payable as presented. Didn't hear any comments or questions about them. We have no liquor license. Is there any other discussion or questions about the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Committee of meetings, I attended several last week. It was kind of a busy week. Economic development, we had some new projects that we're looking at and hopefully some of them will materialize. Board of adjustment, we are, they are working with an individual on more, another new campsite down on 3429 Corridor. Went to Mr. Productions last night and we always have our annual hypocrisy and idiot flash for, you know, good old guy still gets up there and talks for 45 minutes and says the same thing from year to year, but it's something that's needed. I think we need to look into it more here. Also attended the switch over to East Mill School. Great program they're coming in there, folks. You can't believe what they have moving on now with the medical field and stuff that's gonna be there. I think it's something great. I think it's something the county really needs. We get the training for the semi-drivers and stuff coming in, like it would just be another step on the mark in southwest Iowa. Okay, up to you, Lonnie.
I had a juvenile offense meeting last week, just a meeting and everybody was going good up there, in good shape.
I too had a pretty busy week. I had a MAPA board and then I had a West Central up in Harlan and we're going to go through, of course, we're gonna start the new budget time and the strategic program. And then I had a Golden Hills that we are doing interviews for the administration. So Lisa Fox, if we can keep her, that would be wonderful. She's a interim right now and is doing a wonderful job. But Golden Hills is quite a growing organization. So it was a long, lengthy meeting, but we had a couple really good interviews. So with that, that was the rest of my week.
Okay, we have Assistant Engineer Mr. Mayberry this morning and Stu Jacob, so it's your show.
Jake's on vacation this week, but I'm not. The first thing we've got is like approval for some insulation in the new Malvern shed. As you probably know, we tore down the old building and they want it to be constructed. So we've got a bid from Heartland for insulation, some of the red oak, uh, for spray foam insulation on that building. And the total is $18,667. Questions?
Can we get that done before it starts getting cold?
I'm guessing yes. I would imagine because, yeah, this pricing is good for 30 days, so I'm guessing that.
Yeah, Jake briefly said that last week, but it wasn't the first of items, so I would make the most of the proof there. Contracts for Heartland home of a row for $18,667.
And I second that.
A motion made and seconded by the board to approve Heartland's foam insulation for the Malvern shed that's been rebuilt at a cost of $18,667. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I hope so.
Opposed? Motion carries. Think I have a driveway variance.
I got a graph. Not sure if that's really needed, but that's what Jake wants to do.
All right.
Can you push that up?
What's that?
The driveway. What was that?
Okay, yeah, this one, the new firm there, they would like a 60-foot wide driveway. That saves our ordinance of a commercial driveway of 45 feet, so they needed to ask for the variance.
That's a cracking outfit, isn't it?
Yes, yeah. And unfortunately can't read the signature, the handwriting.
Lisa Fox.
Both Matt, our driveway foreman, and Jake, the engineer, have, basically, simply, we are, they are fine with this, but we need the board approval for returns.
So the safety distance is good and they just, we need a wire.
They have an existing drive here.
Got it.
And they want to move it to about right here so they can pull straight into their building. Otherwise, they gotta pull somebody around there and they can't get it turned in and turned around.
So does that mean a tube and pull it?
Yes, whatever they require. I would make the most of the driveway variance at 22381 221st Street.
And I second that.
We have a motion made and seconded by the board to approve a driveway variance at 22381 221st Street. The variance is in request of a 60-foot driveway instead of a 45. Are there any other questions or concerns from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This is written here, so, okay, Richard, we're at, since we are suprannal, we just. Under general discussion, I'm not sure if Jake has talked to me about this in the past few weeks, but as you know, there's always changes to the National Bridge Inspection Program and there's some work coming. We did have a meeting with HDM recently, you know, basically to start design on a couple of other bridge replacements. But they brought up these specifications for national bridge inventory. Basically, all bridges will need to be graded at the elemental level. We believe that, well, it will increase our bridge inspection cost over the next few years. This needs to be done by 2028. Our guess is, like all of these, once 2028 rolls around and they see that certain people aren't done yet, there'll be an extension, but we're going to try to get them done in the timeframe specified. So it's basically just a heads up that you'll see an increase in our consultant fees for bridge inspection for the next probably three years.
Are you talking about all the bridges?
Yes.
Big and little?
Yeah, culverts, bridges, 140s.
So what does an inspection?
Oh, we, let's see, you know, it's been about five or six years since I've been involved, but in the past, I would say it's probably somewhere between $35,000 and $50,000 for the biannual inspection, once every two years. And that will be coming up. They'll start in February 25th and be done with the inspections around April and then, you know, generally we'll pay the consultant fee by January. If they're correct, this increase for the new radiance, probably full around 100 grand. So we will try to split that into the next three years. So essentially, the inspection would, let's say, go for the next three years. Not a real large hit for us, but it's, it's.
Big enough, yeah.
Let's see. Oh, yeah, there will be a session on this at the Engineers Conference next week in Des Moines. So one of, at least one of us will attend that and see if we can get anything else. This is something that we would pretty much rely on our consultants to take care of. Fortunately, Steve Moffitt is one of the members of that group, so. You've got a good consultant to handle this for us.
Okay.
It still needs you.
Yes.
Good.
And I don't believe I've got anything else unless you have any questions.
Yeah, I have a, I was stopped by two neighbors and the neighbor right across the road took his corn out. He runs about five, six semis. Anyway, he revamped the driveway that was there. He brought the dirt off the property, covered the tube, packed it in so the semis didn't have to stop back up to get in and out. Their, their thing is, we don't get to do it, why should they? So I says, I will bring it up to the engineer.
Okay, so what I think I heard is somebody altered their driveway and did not get any.
That could be it. And it will leave about five acres of water right out into the road. It's a half mile, about a half mile south of 34 on the west side of 280th Street. It's known as, I think it's still listed as the greatest property. I'm not sure. Dave Benedict lives right next to it.
Oh, okay, that's right near your, yeah. Well, we'll see if we can find that and.
You can't miss it. It's all nice, pretty dirt.
All right.
And the guy.
Really else they need then is an extension to the driveway.
Right.
Well, they get, I'll try to catch them up.
It sounds so simple, but it hit somebody's pocket like that. And then the sign guys came out and put the speed limit on Lehigh and it was very nice. They got big flags sticking out and so it's there. Now, they only apply by it. You have always said.
As you know, the signs don't slow them down.
You have always said that.
It's, it's that guy.
You gotta keep up here. But it was very nice.
I, I noticed your comments on that last week and, you know, you've, I think you've labeled on the Omaha people, but it's, it's actually more local people. And kind of the nature of, of the, you know, when I was up there, yes, or, excuse me, Ken. And with an upgrade, you're gonna get increased speed.
And you know what? I really don't think a lot of people know that their speed limit's on the, I really don't.
Ignorant of the law.
And I, I so agree, but.
And just, just so you know, an unmarked county road in the state of Iowa during daylight hours, the speed limit is 55 in the night. Now, for me, I don't think I can achieve 50 miles an hour on a railroad. I'm a 35-mile-an-hour guy. Yes. Yeah, Richard, we'll look at that. On those situations, we contact the landowner, not the person farming or the person that did that. So I don't know, in this case, is the owner and the producer the same person?
No, I can't think of the name. This is Hammer, Julian Hammer, who we listed on it.
Yeah, that was for Rogers.
Right, yeah. It'd be Kenny Graves' property.
Okay, so, yeah, we, well, I'll send Joe out a letter then. Do you know who farms that?
David. But I would try and contact either Dusty or Quentin. Hey, is that the problem?
Anything else?
I have nothing.
One of us will see you next week, probably Jake. We will be gone Wednesday through Friday, I think.
Is that up at Ames?
Uh, no, it's, they moved it to the morning of August. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know whether we have proven any or not, but I prefer the beans facility. No one asked me.
Yep.
All right, well, appreciate it. See you again.
Have a good conference.
Okay, next up is General Relief.
My presentation up, boy, because I'm not, I wanted to make sure that I was doing this correctly. I just saw your email from Friday, so do apologize.
That's fair.
Anyway, so.
We made some hard decisions, so sorry.
They're requesting for a minimum bill for propane and if I don't integrate the board, that's great, but I just wanted to, I know that you know what my rule is in the General Relief.
For the first time, right?
Yeah. And I'm newer to the General Relief and the propane thing, so I just also wanted to know if the guidelines work for that as well.
Don't they need to speak to West Central?
Which he has.
All the other, okay.
He has. I was trying really hard because it was starting to get cold and there's just some other issues going on. So I've been working very hard with him and he has been able to protect West Central, so we're working through that. And I've also been in contact with some others as well.
Okay.
And as far as, you know, having a safety inspection and stuff done, it doesn't make any difference who it is, us, West Central, whatever, that has to be done and they get a half fill of propane probably once a year. I mean, they can come back and beg if they can't make, you know, can't get another one.
So if we do the, so if they have to do the safety check, are we able to cover the safety check along with the minimum bill?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if that was.
Well, otherwise they can't get propane.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was something.
That is one of the requirements.
Okay, that's perfect. That way, now we know and then I, yeah.
Do I, do I need to take it, take that okay every time?
I just approve it?
Okay.
Yeah, she can, she can approve it. Most of the time, it's for somebody that can't pay their bill or can't do it, you know. Nobody, nobody stays cold in those counties. It will get covered. Nobody stays cold in Mills County. It will get covered somehow. And you will find that a lot of people will show up at three-thirty on Friday afternoon.
The September West Central Board, that is, their main goal is to keep people alive. So I'm really surprised that they were turned out.
I write that down. The hardest part was the bill was so high. It was a pass bill, so that was the biggest thing. And so I had, I wanted to work with South Brothers, and so we're trying to figure out a way to get him to get a bill, but also be able to pay the pass as well. And so we have been in contact with South Brothers, and then they were able to contact the Central, and so we've all been working together to pay for it.
Very good. Thank you.
So I will send you an email. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ma'am, if she's not available, contact one of us.
Thank you.
No answer on the second either.
We're just going to pass that one.
Ford, like to step forward?
Why today? Tell me, why today?
I could have picked a date sometime.
Let's think about this. No thinking.
Okay, I have a little thing that I would like to read to you. So this is Dear Richard, Carol and Lonnie. I would like to inform you of my pending retirement. My last day will be December thirty-first of this year. I want you to know it's been a pleasure serving the residents of Mills County and working with you as the Mills County Treasurer for the last six-plus years. I always appreciated your willingness to work with me on all the issues, large and small. Thank you for everything, and it's been a good ride.
We appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
It's been great. You have brought your office. You've earned so much work on getting dilapidated trailers. And some, I don't know what happened to them, where they went, but it seemed like you always came up with a solution. And no, the progress that you have put forth in that office has been greatly appreciated by the taxpayers.
To the next one.
You have cleaned out closets that should have been cleaned out a long time ago, and you did not stop. You just kept on, and I kept telling you, you were just priceless. Thank you. So I hope you really think about this. You're really gonna be bored. You're gonna be bored.
You think so?
I mean, it's gonna be thirty below, and the smell is flying, and you're going, gosh, I should go to work.
There you go. There you go.
Jill, thank you. Every day, I thank you for what you have done for the town.
What we don't, so the resignation, because she's still quiet.
I think so.
Oh, I'm trying, guys, and you can tell it's not working.
So here we go. Well, and I just want to say I haven't been there like two seconds, but you have helped me at times in the last couple of weeks. Just every question I have, you have an answer, so I appreciate your patience with me. I'll call you on Saturday. Yeah, there you go.
Carol, I don't know how you got that so cool.
Oh, just...
But that was doggone impressive.
Sure.
Yeah, who else? Here, sir.
You are wonderful.
Good little last drop of the first.
Why not make a bad motion so you go ahead? Be the bigger question.
He's a bad guy. I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from the treasurer. December thirty-first will be the last fourteen days.
No motion made and accepted to accept the letter of resignation from our treasurer at the moment of June four. Their last day will be December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. We really appreciate it.
And thank you, guys. It's been a very good work. We're a great team. We outdo that enough. With that, a lot of things that we have to ask, thank you. The bank's gonna miss seeing you walking back and forth with your little black bag.
I'll see if I can, a bank, yeah, feed, cry.
Production meeting last night. There's a bank that sits on there, chatted on. I have a question about CDs and stuff. And I says, our treasurer is very, very crucial between the two banks we have or we work with. He says, well, why is that? Well, I says, a quarter of a percent of interest is big money to us. He says, really? He says, they don't even talk to us. So I mean, I don't know, you know, what Page County does or who they work with.
Their treasurer doesn't talk to them?
No, this was, well, I don't know. But he says, very interestingly, he says, I know Jay. He says, I'll give you a call and talk to him. So, you know, I said, well, you know, we've had very good success between...
Taxidermists, money. That's how I feel. That's...
How to make it grow.
A lot of people go with IP, and they do have good rates, but if I tell the banks what their rate are, they usually would be hit for me. And my whole thing is, these banks are Mills County. And they employ a lot of local people. They give to our schools. They give to every, all departments. And I always appreciate that. We've had a really good working relationship, and I think that's what it's all about. Well, and they know you so well, and they know they can't say no. And they know they better not say no. Because June four will be there at their doorstep.
Well, that's probably true. That's probably true.
Probably true, too. So, so, yeah. You run out of a million. Thank you. Thank you, sir. You have any questions about my office while we are still in here or anything? Things are going...
How's the little boy?
She's doing very well. Very, if you ever learn, she has already done a couple of closets. She'll go on a couple of weeks here and do a two-and-a-half-day driver's license workshop, and then she'll go back the nineteenth of December for a school on driving, a driving school. So she can hopefully by maybe the first couple of weeks of January will have, be able to do drives in our office again. That's fingers crossed. So that's what we're...
You can't wait.
That's what we're hoping for.
You just said it. You can't wait.
But, yeah, she's doing a great job, and we're getting along very well. It's just been a big bit for us, so.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. Thanks, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda is County Auditor and Commissioner of Elections to discuss formal action approved AFR.
So a series of annual reports that are due to the state every year. These reports are due December first. I worked with the state auditor to get these reports finished. The first one is the annual AFR, which is Annual Financial Report. And this just basically uses the numbers from last year so that the state knows what we actually did with the dollars. And it's to double-check, make sure we didn't go over budget in any items. So asking for approval of that one, that one was, per project, to publish that one, and it was published, I believe, in last week's report.
This is this first one?
No, this is gonna be one of these, but the one that doesn't say we're giving the AP at the top.
Be the first sheet down. Revenue is another finance service, right? Be the first one?
Yep.
Decent balance, I like that.
The what?
Decent balance, I like that. I would make a motion to approve the AFR report from the auditor.
And this is having to done yearly, right, Amber?
Yep.
Which is going to be at the end of December?
It's usually done sometime in October or November, because it's due December first.
Okay. And I second this?
A motion and second to approve the AFR from the county auditor. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is approve GAAP AFR.
It's a similar report that's due December first. The GAAP stands for the set of accounting standard principles, government accounting, accounting standard principles for, for whatever reason they have you run this report, it's almost the same numbers, but it's a separate report the state requires. This one does not have to be published, but it does have to be approved by the board before it's submitted to the state. And these numbers also came from the auditor's office, so it'll be completed just right.
Okay. Why make a motion to approve the GAAP AFR? Government accounting?
Yeah, it's like a government acceptable county practices accessible.
Sounds good to me. To approve the county auditor's AFR report, for approval purposes only. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are now up to approve of urban renewal.
The urban renewal report is the report that's submitted to the state that shows what TIP dollars you received and where they were paid out. It just keeps track of all those numbers. Each county, city, required a closet for every year, regardless of whether or not they have an active TIP or urban renewal area. We have three active urban renewal areas, Highway thirty-four and I twenty-nine, Woodfield and Ohana. So those numbers are reported on this annual report for urban renewal.
What's the year on the ending of some of these?
I know the ending for Highway thirty-four, I twenty-nine is twenty twenty-eight. Came back at Geo One for that area. The other ones, I have not had a chance to look through the development agreements to see when those end.
You know, Ohana should be getting close.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, not Ohana. Sorry, Highway thirty-four. Ohana, I'm not sure. Like I said, I need to look through their development agreements still and see what that looks like.
And this too needs to be done by December first?
Yep. And actually, it looks like fiscal year last payment for Ohana is twenty forty-one, unless you pay the maximum amount back.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the herbal, herbal.
Herbal.
Herbal. Urban renewal. That is including your Highway thirty-four, twenty-nine, the Woodfield, and the Ohana to be completed, like you said, the first.
I forgot to get back to you.
I'll second that motion. I'll read the motion in a second. Seconded and you?
Yes, sir. Is there a motion made and seconded to approve the urban renewals as listed, correct?
Yes.
Any further discussions, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then I have two resolutions to approve. First one is Resolution twenty-four forty-one, and that approves the annual appropriation for the Ohana rebate agreement. And that will be for five hundred fifty thousand dollars. And these will be for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Forty-six, twenty twenty-six?
Yep, fiscal twenty-six.
I make a motion to approve the Resolution twenty-four dash forty-one certifying the TIP appropriation for the FY twenty-six for Ohana with the amount of five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Then a motion made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-four dash forty-one certifying TIP appropriations for FY twenty-six for the Ohana Development at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are there any questions, concerns on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution twenty-four forty-two for the Woodfield addition.
Yep, the same thing. The amount for this one is fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. What I didn't mention last one is, when we certified for TIP, we only keep the amount of dollars that we receive. So if we don't receive that amount, they won't get that amount. They get the amount that we receive. This is just our best guess of what we'll be getting.
And what's the year on Woodfield?
I don't think the motion to approve Resolution twenty-four forty-two is appropriate appropriations for FY twenty-six Woodfield of two fourteen seventy-two.
Two hundred and fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-four forty-two certifying TIP appropriations for FY twenty-six for the Woodfield addition at fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. And zero penny. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also like to mention that I don't, the amount needed to pay for the Geo One that is connected to the Highway thirty-four, I twenty-nine urban renewal area, that amount is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty. I don't believe any motion for that one, but I'm just letting you guys know that that one will also be certified so that we can make payments on that Geo One.
So, yeah, thank you, Ricky.
Two, or two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty.
That would just be information only, right?
Why does that not need a motion?
I believe, well, one, it didn't get on the agenda, and two, I don't believe it needs one because it covers our Geo One.
It's ours, yes, not the others.
Okay, so we don't need to have it in the minutes?
I don't need a whole lot of time.
Okay.
Okay, next on our agenda is public health. General discussion, public health funds.
Did.
Okay.
Everybody wrestle with email yesterday.
Yeah. It would work and then it wouldn't work, and I was like, it was driving me crazy.
I think Patrick sent out a notice to go.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
Email and things, so. Some black spots coming from up above.
Yes. Um, here's a little, a package. I just kind of wanted to follow up from our last board of health meeting. This is just several documents that show I'm tracking and monitoring our budget. I have the. The receivable document that shows when everything's been billed, when it comes in, when we deposit it. The grant, updated grant worksheet that shows all of our resources, where the money comes from, who does it, the services that have been billed through, all the way through October and what we've received through November 13th, everything that is outstanding. So, there's that. There's kind of an expense overview that shows we are 30% expended through October, which is, October is 33% of the year, we're at 30, so we're a little bit under instead, which is good. And then our reimbursements to go along with that are right at 29%, so they're just under where our expenses are. And. I see that you guys have a resolution on the agenda for more county appropriations. I just want to say thank you for giving those in advance. That's just kind of a five-year overview of the monies that come in every month and how every month's different. It all comes in, but it varies throughout the year.
So, now that you have $9,000 for building maintenance. That's pretty high.
We pay all the utilities for the building. So, that includes natural gas, electricity, water.
Okay. Then you've got $8,700 for utilities on top of that.
Um, I'll have to double check what that is. I know building maintenance also includes like when we're having issues with mice. And again, those are budgeted amounts, so I'll have to go back and double check.
Well, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2443 appropriating the remaining county dollars to public health will be budgeted for the sum of $200,000.
We have, I mean, there are.
No, go ahead.
We have nothing on this general discussion, public health funds or anything, no motion, no action taken on it? You know, the one she presented, you're okay with it?
I'm all right with it. I don't know what you can change. Realistic vaccine today.
Yeah. Yeah, there's actually. We already actually have on what she brought to us today.
I'm finishing my motion. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2443 appropriating the remaining funds, remaining budgeted funds for FY 24, 25 to public health in advance to, to, of $230,000.
Well, at this time, I'd like to read a letter here from Mike Galloway and Associates, Alas Coonies. I have reviewed the DPS letter regarding the determination that public health has been supplanting grant funds. I have also discussed the issues with outside counsel, a representative of the state auditor's office and the county attorney's office. The allegations and findings contained in this letter are very serious and have the potential to impact other grants awarded to Mills County. This is an extremely serious issue. I will be recommending to the board of supervisors that it approve fully appropriating the property tax dollars budgeted to the Board of Health in the budget that commenced July 1, 2024. This is about $230,000. I will further recommend to the board of supervisors that no additional property tax dollars be appropriated to the Board of Health the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. I also want to make clear that the board of supervisors has no way condone or engage in any supplementing, supplanting of grant funds. It appears, it appears based upon the revenue and expenditures to date, the Board of Health will not have enough funds to fund their operations through June 30, 2025. This assertion has been supported by various entities, including the state auditor's office. The board of supervisors and the county auditor's office has been extremely vigilant in warning you of this situation. No steps have been taken to remedy this situation. The action of the overspending, the certified budget, and the improper use of grant funds has a potential for severe legal implementations. Anyone have? That's the rights.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second it.
So, do you have questions or concerns? We have a motion on the floor.
In a second.
In a second. Now we can have a discussion.
So, this is pretty serious?
Yes.
And you understand this fully?
I do, and I, I. All the steps to make sure all of our current grants are in good standing. I made contact with all of them. I'm reviewing their contracts, and I'll be sending out times to open the contracts with them. What happened was a mistake and it was not intentional by any means, and I'm doing what I can to learn from it.
Are there any other questions, concerns?
Is it, may I ask, are we doing rule call vote? Will I will pass for rule call vote?
Benton? Yes. Am I right?
Yes.
Crouch.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
That concludes our business on our agenda. We are open for general discussion.
Can I get a copy of that letter that you read? I'll get you. Okay, thank you. I do have, one quick thing I want to mention that I didn't get on my report. I. At the last meeting, I had you guys approve a consultant, advisory consultants. And the state auditor said we'll still have to open that up for, to post it. So, this time, I'm not gonna exercise that option, so. They said we still have to open up for it, and so, at this time, I'll just. I've got a mentor, so I should be good there.
Change my idea, Jill?
Not yet.
Both of you.
They're still on, right?
Mr. Sol, is he ready to?
Well. There's no other discussion. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:07.
I will second that motion.
It's a motion made and seconded to adjourn meeting at 9:07. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie? Thank you.
Right, any X? Close it.
There you go.